Thank you, Gal, everybody for coming out tonight. We're going to call this meeting to order. Monday, May 22, 2024, RCPS School Board Meeting. Got it a little loud there. Good to see everyone out tonight. I hope everyone... Can you just turn me down a little bit? Testing, one, two. Testing, testing. If you all got your Bibles tonight, open up to 1 John 3. Just joking. Can we get testing, testing a little bit more? Can you go down? That's about... Okay. Testing, testing. All right, that's better. All right, well, good to see everyone out here tonight. I know this beautiful weather. Many of you are wanting to be at a ballgame or have somewhere to be, but we're excited to recognize a lot of our kids tonight for their awards. And I just want to say to the teachers and students who are near the end of the school year and SOL testing that's all going on, we hope that you find strength to get through the rest of the school year and into the summer months. So, thank you tonight, Mr. Swigert and his team for having us out here. I see Deputy SRO Warwood's in the back. Good to have you as well. And we're going to get into our close session. Good to have you here tonight. Our first thing on the agenda, we did have a closed meeting tonight, and so we've already approved the agenda. And we've had a few things that you see if you have a list of the agenda that's here. So, the first thing that's on our agenda tonight is a moment of silence. So, if you'd like to join me in a moment of silence, we're going to do that this time. All right. If you will stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, we're going to try this. Sorry, I'm sorry for the mic tonight. We are going to get into our character count part of the evening. And I do want to read from the Virginia Code of what legislators have put in place for the public schools to do this, because I think it's pretty neat and that being on the board for a couple of years now and then reading this, it just is very fitting and all for our visitors that are here tonight and all that will receive reward, A award tonight. This is part of the reason why you're receiving that. But it says in the Virginia Code, 22.1-208.01, "Character Education Required: Public Schools. The basic character traits taught may include: One, trustworthiness, including honesty, integrity, reliability, and loyalty; Two, respect, including the precepts of the Golden Rule, tolerance and courtesy; Three, responsibility, including hard work, economic self-reliance, accountability, diligence, perseverance, and self-control; Four, fairness, including justice, consequences of bad behavior, principles of nondiscrimination and freedom from prejudice; Five, caring, including kindness, empathy, compassion, consideration, generosity and charity; and Six, citizenship, including patriotism, the Pledge of Allegiance, respect of the American flag, concern for the common good, respect for authority and the law, and community mindfulness." So, this is why we do this part of our school board in presenting the Character Council Awards, because it's required by law, and we are glad to be able to do this part. Mr. Swigert, take it over.
There it goes. Whoa, you're right. These are hot. Sorry. Chairman Cross, Superintendent Shiflett, school board members, welcome to East Rockingham High School. Is there a message with all of the Spotswood blue in front of me right now? Are we very confused? Just remember that when you all go to Spotswood next, I expect lots of red as we go forward. So, I'm here to present two character counts for two of our wonderful students. We have a cool program here called Elite Eagles, and we organize students almost on a weekly basis for some of the positive things going on in our school. We try and find students that may not be the starting quarterback or the number one student in the class, but students that might be doing things behind the scenes or just in places that we're not always looking. It's a really cool program. I wanted to mention it because both of these students have received this award at some point in their career at East Rock, and this is a great follow-up to it. So, what I'm reading is not my own words. They're being pulled from the awards they received previously, and the teachers made comments about these two. So, my first one is Ryland Krishon. She's a senior here at East Rockingham High School. She's an exceptional student with an impressive eternal drive to succeed. Her desire for excellence inside and outside the classroom is further complemented by her deep sense of justice, fairness, and compassion for others. There are some people who make excuses, and there are some people who look for solutions. We are confident she will continue looking for solutions to bigger and bigger issues, and she will positively impact those around her with her talents, perseverance, kindness, and honesty. So, Ryland, come on up. Next up is Kenny Harlow. Kenny's actually seated right over here with us. Once again, as I mentioned, he received an Elite Eagle Award a little while ago. In his summary, he's a sophomore at East Rockingham High School. He has a recognizable friendly face in our halls. Kenny makes school a priority, and it shows. His ability to connect easily with students and adults is deeply admirable. Despite his adversities, Kennedy remains upbeat and pleasant. Teachers and students have nothing but positive things to say about Kenny. And I've got two quotes here. Kenny is the best human I know. He is kind to everyone, always has something positive to say about everything. He's an all-around good guy. And the second one is Kenny is so awesome. I love having him in class. He is so funny and kind. He always brightens my day and makes me smile. So, Kenny Harlow. And our Volunteer of the Year. Almost everybody here in the East Rock community will recognize her as she comes forward. This goes to Esther Butler Miller. She's an outstanding asset to our ERHS community. Her dynamic personality, natural leadership, and friendliness set her apart. Esther's welcoming presence is palpable, by the way. She greets guests and community members at sporting events. Her smile is contagious, and she puts others at ease. Just a couple of facts here. She's dedicated seven years of service to ERHS, starting first as an active volunteer and member of the Athletic Boosters, and then later becoming president. She's dependable and hardworking, allowing the leadership team fantastic support and a bit of respite. So, come on forward.
Next tonight will be Mrs. Blair Harper, Principal at Riverbend Elementary School, coming out to present.
Good evening. I'm excited this evening to recognize two of our Cardinals who've made a significant impact on our school family and have been recognized by the staff members as being outstanding characters and citizens of our school community. I'll start this evening with Mr. Trenton Scott. Trenton is recognized by his teachers as being someone who lights up the room wherever he goes. His endless acts of kindness impact all who come into contact with him. He carries himself in a way that is considerate of anyone who's around him. Trenton is respectful to all adults and his peers. He is a true leader through his actions. We are so proud to have Trenton, and Ms. Bellis is proud to have you in her class this year. You're going to go out into the world and make a true difference, and he really does. He starts every morning, meets me on the sidewalk with that beaming smile of his, and it's on there all day. So, thank you by leading by example. Come on down, Mr. Trenton. And next this evening is Ms. Yeriely Sanchez. Yeriely is recognized by her teachers as being a thoughtful and kind person. She is the first one to befriend others and to help anyone in need. Yeriely is respectful to adults and peers alike. She leads by example and is truly a kind-hearted person. Her gentle smile and care for classmates, as well as our younger students, including her siblings, in our school, show what a gentle and genuine leader she is. We are so proud of Yeriely, and we know she will make a difference in others' lives. And Yeriely is a big part of our morning news program, our Cardinal Morning News Show. So, she starts the day with a positive tone for the whole rest of our school. And again, throughout the day, you can always see her doing the right thing and helping others to do the same. Thank you, Yeriely. And now, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Heather Smith, Assistant Principal, to recognize our Riverbend Volunteer of the Year.
Our Riverbend Volunteer of the Year is Frank Doherty, and I have a few messages from some of our teachers. Over the past several years, I've been incredibly fortunate to have Mr. Doherty as a dedicated volunteer in my classroom. Throughout this time here, he has consistently gone above and beyond fostering meaningful connections with each of my students. Mr. Doherty is not just a volunteer. He is a beacon of positivity and support, both academically and emotionally. Mr. Doherty is a role model in every sense of the word, demonstrating compassion, patience, and a genuine interest in the student's well-being. He is such a calming presence for our students. He can inspire even the most disengaged students, igniting a newfound enthusiasm for learning. Mr. Doherty's unwavering dedication and genuine care have left an indelible mark on so many. We are truly grateful for him. And then I also have a few comments from students that I want to share with Mr. Doherty as well. Mr. Doherty is so sweet and kind. He helps people who struggle with assignments. Mr. Doherty is so kind and helpful. Mr. Doherty is very smart. If you ask him a question, he knows the answer. And Mr. Doherty is a lot of fun, and I can always count on Mr. Doherty to help me understand. So, Mr. Doherty, if you could please come up. We appreciate all that you do.
Also, if you're a parent, parent guardian here with the students tonight, for all that we've recognized, would you please stand up real quick before we get to the next round? Because we didn't recognize you. So, would you give a big hand for the parents? Thank you, guys, for training up these kids. We do, Mr. Boyers, you're next on the list. You're sitting there like we was going to forget about you.
Thank you, Chair Cross, Dr. Shiflett, members of the Rockingham County School Board, and everybody gathered here. This is always the most fun part of any board meeting, just to see our students and our volunteers that are recognized. And so, along with Mrs. Angela Beagle, my Assistant Principal, we will introduce our two students. And since Isabella, Izzy is going first, I'll let Ms. Beagle do the honors.
Good evening, everyone. So, Izzy is recognized by her fifth-grade teacher, Ms. Ansel, for outstanding demonstration of all the pillars of character. Izzy exemplifies care by consistently checking in on others, demonstrates reliability through fulfilling her commitments, and showcases loyalty to her friends. Additionally, Izzy approaches every assignment in action with dedication, showing great responsibility in all of her endeavors. Her commitment to these virtues reflects her exceptional character. Izzy, can you come on down?
I will say this, members of the school board. I don't know if it was last meeting or the meeting before, but it was one of your recent meetings that you approved the hiring of a brand-new teacher who started a cub run when Todd Johnson and I were there. And the reason I bring that up is we knew early in that girl's elementary life, that was her goal to be a teacher. I can now tell you that Izzy wants to be a teacher as well as I have known her for the last two years, and I have no doubt that she will achieve that dream of being a teacher, just like her mother is a rock star kindergarten teacher at South River. Thank you. Our next student in fifth grade at South River is Mr. TJ Showalter. TJ is recognized also by Ms. Ansel, his fifth-grade teacher, for his outstanding demonstration of the pillars of character. He has a great reputation as a respectful young man. He consistently makes the right choices with unwavering courage. He actively cooperates with his classmates and everyone. He ensures fairness in all situations. I actually saw that play out in front of me in the cafeteria just last week when there was a little bit of a dispute. He did not take sides. He's a good listener, and he actually just tries to help people solve problems. He spreads kindness to all people he meets. He lends a helping hand to those who need it, and his dedication to embodying all of the pillars of character is an exemplary example and inspiration to his peers and to everyone. TJ, please come down. And our volunteer. Well, this is, I have written something, but I'm probably going to go off script here a little bit. Mr. John Lambert. Mr. Lambert, can you wave to us? We're right there. Mr. Lambert has his family here as well, okay? Notice that I took the picture outside. Mr. Lambert almost never comes into the building. Now, he does. He comes to his granddaughter's functions and events and presentations, and he does come in to have lunch sometimes and whatever. But here's what I've learned for the entire two years that Ms. Beagle and I have been the admin team at South River. Mr. John Lambert, grandfather to Chloe, a fourth grader, has faithfully waved a hearty good morning greeting to each of our South River staff, teachers, parents, students, visitors, volunteers who enter our campus as he stands faithfully on the sidewalk at the corner of Elm Avenue and 20th Street in Grottoes every morning. His warm and friendly smiles and his enthusiastic waves brighten all of our spirits, even on the dreariest and the coldest day. And a week and a half ago, when I went out to tell Mr. Lambert he was our Volunteer of the Year, I got scolded by one of my teachers who said, "You were talking to him. I didn't get my wave from him that morning," because I had distracted Mr. Lambert, okay? He has waved his morning hellos to over 100 cars, vans, buses, trucks who pass every day, whether they enter our campus or they're just passing through to go to the park, going out to 340 because they're on their way to work. And he gets many honks of appreciation from those who pass him as he gives a hearty wave and a warm smile to them every day. I can count on one hand the number of days Mr. Lambert has missed this duty over the last two years, and I still would have a few fingers left over, all right? So, it's really cool that our Volunteer of the Year at South River is somebody that gives everyone in our community on the way to South River a warm greeting, a friendly smile, a lot of encouragement, and a lot of enthusiasm, whether they come to our school or whether they're just passing by on their way to work. Thank you, Mr. Lambert, for the way that you bless our school and our community every morning that our Rangers, teachers, staff, and students come to our school. Thank you so much, Mr. John Lambert.
Before you sit down, Mr. Lambert, would I, everyone, give him a nice wave before he sits back down? Thank you so much, Mr. Lambert, for all you did. Do we give them a hand tonight? Next on our list tonight is our Inspire Awards, and Braxton Jones will be presenting to Ms. Charity Thomas, second-grade teacher from Peakview Elementary School.
Good evening. I am Braxton Jones, and I am presenting the Inspire Award to Ms. Thomas. Ms. Thomas was my cooperating teacher for Teachers for Tomorrow class last year. I've always had a love for kids, and being in the classroom was like a dream come true. Ms. Thomas inspired me every day. She goes above and beyond for her students with fun class days while still involving curriculum. She is a very dedicated teacher, staying after school late and coming in during the weekends to set up for the following week. Ms. Thomas is the reason I'm going to college to be a teacher. If there is anyone I want to be like, it's her. We're still very close. She wrote countless recommendation letters for me, supported me at athletic events, and was my biggest fan last year. I now have a relationship with her kids outside of school, and she's been the person I go to if I have any questions about education. Nobody deserves this as much as she does, and any former students or parents would say the same.
Thank you, Ms. Jones, and thank you, Ms. Thomas, for your inspiration to our students. Next tonight is Addison Hutton, and he'll be presenting to Kayla Satterwhite, math teacher at Turner Ashby.
Good evening. My name is Addie Hutton, and Ms. Satterwhite is an amazing inspiration to me. Your junior year of high school is usually seen as your hardest year, but Ms. Satterwhite has made mine so much better. Ms. Satterwhite is my honors math analysis teacher, and I have her first thing in the morning. Nobody wants to do math first thing in the morning, but Ms. Satterwhite makes it so, so much fun. She cares about her students so much and always has our best interest in mind. She gives us color-coded notes for us to be able to understand what we're learning and retain the information better. She's always willing to answer our random questions, and her room is a safe space. Whenever you want, you can go in and rent or grab a mint, and she will always listen. She always encourages us to give everything our best and believe in ourselves just as much as she believes in us. Ms. Satterwhite has made a positive impact on TA and its students. She will always be my favorite teacher, and I will always remember her impact on my life.
That's good stuff, isn't it? Wow, wow, wow. Thank you, Ms. Hutton, for that tonight, and thank you for our teachers inspiring our students, especially ones that are coming back into education. So, Braxton, we're proud of you as well and miss you on the ball field this year, but we know you're going to do great things. Next on our list tonight is the 2023-2024 VDOE Exemplary Performance School Awards, and that's Mr. Shiflett. He'll be presenting to Audubon, Ms. Parker, and Turner Ashby, Mr. Chris Knoll.
Good evening, Chairman Cross and members of the board and guests. I'd like to recognize this evening Audubon Elementary School and Principal Tanya Parker, and also Turner Ashby High School Principal, Mr. Chris Knoll. The Virginia Board of Education recognized 64 schools for their high achievement and continued improvement as part of the Exemplary Performance School Recognition Program. The Exemplary School Recognition Program and its Exemplary Performance Awards recognizes schools that exceed Board-established performance requirements or show continuous improvement on academic and school quality indicators. 37 schools earned the Board of Education Highest Achievement Award, and 27 schools earned the Board of Education Continuous Improvement Award. The awards are based on performance and practices during the 2022 and 2023 and prior school years. To be recognized for continuous improvement, at least one of the following criteria must be met. The school demonstrates an increase in the combined rate for math, reading, and science for each of the past three years with a total increase across the three years of 10 points or more. The school demonstrates an increase in the combined rate for two or more student groups in reading and math for each of the past three years with a total increase across the three years of 10 points or more. Or the school demonstrates an increase in the Graduation and Composite Index for each of the past three years with a total increase across the three years of 4% or more. And so, I'd like to just recognize both of these schools and the principals and their leadership for earning these acknowledgements from the State Board of Education. So, please join me in congratulating these folks.
No big check?
I told Ms. Parker the check's in the mail. Thank you. Also this evening, I would like to recognize a teacher from Broadway High School, Kate Hollenberg, and some students that worked in her Economics and Personal Finance class. Students taking Economics and Personal Finance at Broadway High School all get to play the Stock Market Game. They work in teams of two to four to make as much money as possible through investing in stocks, bonds and mutual funds over the course of 10 weeks. They get $100,000 of fake money to invest, and the game uses real-time pricing tied to the actual stock market. One team from Broadway High School, the team known as the Impoverished and Hungry, consisting of Kayden Blase, Kane, Ortliner and Ryder Hess, had a really successful season. They were able to end their 10-week portfolio with an equity of $111,195.67. So they made over $11,000 in just 10 weeks. They placed first overall in the JMU Regional Stock Market Game Competition and were honored this past Thursday on May 15th with a reception at the JMU hosted by the JMU Center for Economic Education and Your Economic Success. Not only that, but the team won state-level recognition as well. They won second place overall in the state and first place in high school in the state. For that achievement, they were honored at an awards luncheon at the Richmond Federal Reserve Bank on Friday, May 10th, where they shared a little bit about their strategy and experience playing the game and got to revel in the 100-degree views of Richmond for the 23rd floor. So I would like, they got their certificates, but I would like them to come down and just be acknowledged by the board and the audience for a job well done. I'm on. Hey, congratulations, Tony. Good seeing you again, buddy. Thank you. I appreciate it.
How much money did you say they made?
Over $11,000 in 10 weeks.
Over $11,000 in 10 weeks. Great job, guys. Great job. At this moment, we will take a, a five-minute break for anyone that needs to leave, and so we're gonna take a five-minute recess real quick. Oh, no, no, no. Thanks for, no, thanks for reminding me, though. Audio test. This is an audio test. Audio test. Testing, testing. Testing, testing. Alright. Call this meeting back to order and appreciate everyone taking five minutes there and letting us take a five. I think I started with Ms. Burgoyne last time, so I will start on my left with Ms. Jackie Lord this time. So, Ms. Lord, you're up first.
Thank you. So, busy, busy week. It's, it is May still, and, or busy two weeks. One highlight, lots of, lots of highlights, but I'm just gonna, lots of great things, but I'm gonna highlight. I was able to go to Penns and help the Farm-to-Plate class make sausage the day after our last meeting. And that was really neat, being able to teach kids how to take pork and make it into a product that they can use for, for breakfast. They might have done some fundraising with it. But that, that was a really great experience and really got to see firsthand some of the CTE programs at Penn, so that was really nice. I was also able to attend the RIFI Scholarship Reception, and where we gave out hundreds of thousands of dollars for our students continuing their education and, and going into the workplace after this, the seniors after they graduate. I was able to attend the FFA banquet, and that, that is why I'm wearing blue tonight, because I'm still in FFA mode. And it's really, this is what's on top of the laundry basket. So yay for all of us going FFA, right? And then, since I'm in FFA mode right now, I'm also helping 26 students at four different schools with Ag Science Fair projects that are all due on Monday. So we've got, we're doing things like, I had some kids took them to JMU and they tested the protein content of actually Dr. Shiflett's eggs. And remind me to share those results with you later. It was interesting, and thank you, Dr. Shiflett, for the eggs. We've got kids testing like how to clean up oil in the shop and how strawberries, the best way to preserve strawberries. So we're doing some really cool ag science stuff this, the, right now, and if I can just get through it, it will be a miracle. But that's what I've got going on right now. Thank you.
They also made you an honorary member last board meeting too, right?
Oh, wait. So. Spotswood made me an honorary member, and Broadway made me an honorary member.
Okay, that's, well, that's why you're wearing your blue tonight.
Yeah, yeah. I think this is actually the same exact outfit I wore.
That's great. Thank you, Ms. Lord. Ms. Hurst?
It is a busy season. May is very busy as a board member, but I want to highlight just one thing. I'm gonna keep mine brief. I want to highlight the Rotary Club of Rockingham County for recognizing two students from every elementary, middle and high from every area in Harrisonburg, Rockingham County. So there were, they provided luncheon and an award ceremony to recognize students for exemplary behavior and character, really. And so it was just another, we, every, every month, the school board recognizes students of outstanding character with our Character Counts program, but then we also, our local Rotary Club also does the same thing. And these are not the same students, right? It's different students every time, which I think is great because I think it says a lot about Rockingham County Public Schools and all of our area schools that we have so many outstanding students in our division to select from. But they, over and over during the luncheon, they're reading all of these characteristics. You know, there's a little paragraph, much like we do with Character Counts, there's a little paragraph about each student. And over and over, you hear about the ethics of the child or the outstanding commitment to service or kindness or empathy. And so I just wanted to, again, recognize that and also share one thing about Rotary that I did not know, and that is their four-way test of all the things we think, say or do. And I, their test is that you first ask yourself, is it the truth? Second, is it fair to all concerned? Third, will it build goodwill and better friendships? And fourth, will it be beneficial to all concerned? And I thought that was, I had never heard of that four-way test, and I thought that was, that's a pretty high standard to set for yourself and, and for, for Rockingham County. And it was just amazing to hear and see all of the students that were selected for being able to meet this criteria. So that's my highlight.
Thank you, Ms. Hurst. Ms. Cave?
Thank you. My highlight for the past two weeks was getting to participate in the, how, are you smarter than a fifth grader? At Elkton Elementary School. And it was super fun. Last week on Monday, we did math to prepare for the math SOL the day after. And today, we actually did science, so, and their science SOLs are tomorrow. So I did manage to survive with my dignity intact, which was not questionable for math last week, but for science today, it was, you know, it was, it was up for grabs. It was up for grabs. But those kids, I was really, I was excited to be in the same group that I was last week because you get to know the few that you get with a little bit, and I think that they were really prepared. And if they're any indicator of the rest of the students there, I think they're gonna do really well. And it was a good time, and I think the only thing that could have made it more exciting is if we could have actually had Jeff Foxworthy there. That would have been really cool. I don't, maybe I'm gonna aim for that next year. I don't know. I like to. But, you know, one thing that I, you know, you hear from students time to time, and sometimes I think kids are just, you know, they just say things. But when you hear them say things like, "Well, I know I'm gonna fail. Well, I know I'm not gonna pass this," or "This is my worst subject," or something like that, we just, as board members, take those moments to pour into those kids' lives and say, "You know what?" And this is what I said today to that student. I said, "You're only gonna get what you say you're gonna get." So if you say you're gonna fail, you might. And I said, "So just take the next 24 hours to say, 'I'm going to pass this thing. I can do this. I know the answers. This is going to be easy.'" And just say those things, like whether you believe it or not, just say them out loud, and I believe that it'll make a difference in your life. So it just, you know, I love having those moments where we can just pour into these kids and, you know, do whatever good that we can do for them. But I just wanted to thank the folks at Elkton Elementary for inviting me for that and for all of the hard work that all of the teachers do in getting our kids prepared for these SOLs. And I think today was, it was really, those little things are really awesome because it breaks down that nervousness of the testing and all. And I thought that that was really great that they had it planned the day before the tests. And so I think that they'll see good results from that and from all the good teaching that they've done through the year. So, thank you. And those are my highlights.
Thank you, Ms. Cave. Ms. Burgoyne?
Alright, I don't want to be too loud. So I have a couple highlights here. I, the first one was I was able to attend my daughter's school concert, and it was awesome. It was second and third graders, I'm sorry, first and second graders from Linville, Edom. And I wanted to shout out to Mrs. Butler, who is their music teacher, because she has three schools, which is three complete, you know, bodies of students and, and administrations and things, and she's bouncing all around all week. And she does just an awesome job. I mean, I know my daughter absolutely loves it, so I wanted to shout out to her and to any other, any other teachers who are bouncing from schools to schools. And just, that's just, we really appreciate it. My other board highlight was I finally got to go on a field trip with my daughter. We got to go to a dairy farm, and part of me now wants to be a dairy farmer, Jackie, so just putting that out there. I loved it. I absolutely loved it. It was so educational for me. It was amazing. But we just have some really awesome community members who open up their farms and their businesses and everything to our students. So I just really appreciated that. I did want to shout out to, Mrs. Kirkland is here, my daughter's guidance counselor. So during the field trip, they asked if anybody had any questions, and two of my daughter's questions, the first one was, "Do cows have birthdays?" She was very concerned about birthdays. And her second question was, "How do you feel, how do you know if the cows are stressed or happy or scared?" And it did not stop there because Mrs. Kirkland tells me how important those things are and those feelings are and how to deal with them. And it was just, it was so sweet and so special, so I told Mrs. Kirkland I was gonna shout her out tonight. But she, they actually had a very, very good reason of how they, they've got like a GPS that tells them their, their movement and if they are having a hard day. So it was really, really cool. But I thought that was really cool that my daughter was so in tune with those things because of what she had learned from, from Mrs. Kirkland at school. I got my, my twins pre-registered for pre-K, so we'll see how that goes. So that's really exciting. I could have all three of my kids in school next year. And my last highlight is there is a nonprofit in my district, in District Two, called Still Meadows Enrichment Center and Camp. And it is a summer camp, and they also do equine therapy for those with special needs. And I was talking with their board director one day, and I said, "Hey, I think it would be really cool if we could offer some scholarships to some of our students." And she said, "Yeah, absolutely." And so we have sent one-week scholarships for a full free week of camp to all of our special education classes in our high schools in Rockingham County. And so I want to thank Jody Haas for that. She also said, "Let's just include Harrisonburg City and Page County and Augusta County." So we've sent them to all of those local high schools to give one student a free week of camp, which I thought was really cool. And hopefully we'll get a bunch of our students there to, to spend the week because it's a really awesome camp. So that's it. Thank you.
Did they know the birthday?
They did, but they also told my daughter she could name a cow, so.
So she got to name one? Alright. That's great. Ms. Lord, are you also a dairy farmer as well?
No, I don't do that kind. That's hard.
Okay, alright, alright. Alright, alright. Dr. Shiflett?
Thank you, Chairman Cross. So today marks the last full week of school for the school year, the next two weeks. So, hold on, I hear, I think that may have been a teacher, but I'm not sure if that was a teacher or a student with that. that was a teacher or a student with that applause there. So, that's okay though. Hey, I'll, I'll applaud too. You notice I'm mentioning that, right? So I have recognized that as well. So, and it is May and it's busy, a lot going on. I do have a couple of highlights. First, I want to give a shout out to Spotswood High School's debate team and their coach, Emmett Shahan. They won the state title in debate. And that was the first time that they have won that, that award. And so I'm really excited for them and, and happy. They were not able to be here tonight for some recognition, but I still wanted to give them a shout out. Also, earlier tonight, I did recognize the state winners from Broadway High School with the stock market game. But we also had some regional winners from Pence Middle School and I wanted to give them a shout out. Third-place team, Melanie Zaldivar, Leah Dula, Cherish Matthews, and Haley Kenny. They won third place in the region. And the second-place winner in the region was Judah Napotnik and Ra Miller. And both of those teams were recognized last week at the reception. And they were, both of those teams were coached and advised by Kathy Glick and Mrs. Kim Dove. So shout out to those folks. And last week, I got to attend, to attend the Riffey Scholarship Banquet, where they handed out thousands of dollars of scholarships to our students, which is just absolutely tremendous. And I really, really appreciate Riffey and all the donors who support that cause. Had an opportunity to do a little pinch hitting, you might say. It's that time of year, baseball, softball season. So I drove bus 240 last Friday and fortunately, I was able to keep it between the ditches and didn't have any accidents, although I did struggle a bit with the stop arm at the railroad crossing, Mr. Sowers. I've got to figure out how to get that, I got to be better with that. And then last, I'd like to just give a bit of a recognition. A couple of weeks ago, I went to a softball game at Turner Ashby High School. I think they may have been hosting Spotswood that evening, but that's irrelevant to the story. The, the main purpose for me talking about that is that was a celebration that evening from the 2004 Turner Ashby High School's state championship softball team. And one of our very own, our clerk of the board, Caitlin Bowman, then, was on that team. So she was recognized that evening along with some other players. And I believe, Ms. Hurst, if I'm not mistaken, there may be, there was someone on that team that you are probably very familiar with as well.
My little sister.
You're, okay, your little sister. Yeah, I thought, I saw your dad there that evening and we chatted for a bit. So congratulations, they, they did a really nice recognition for the 20-year reunion on that team. And, and I think if, if I understand it correctly, that state title game, Turner Ashby won one to zero. And your clerk of the board scored that running run, so just so you know. All right, thank you, Chairman.
Did, did they give you a ring? Did you wear it tonight? Come on, you should have wore that ring. All right. Thank you, board members. Thank you, Dr. Shiflett, for all the recognitions tonight, everything that's happening inside our public schools. It's incredible. And I, I have one highlight tonight. Last Friday, I had the opportunity to go to Washington DC, to the National Museum of American History with JMU and also local EL educators. And so I just want to give a shout out tonight to all of our EL educators in Rockingham County and all the hard work that you guys put into our students and everything that you do here. But I have a list of those who went, so I wanted to give them a shout out tonight. From Broadway High School, we had three EL teachers that come, Meredith Trotter, Abigail Almstead, and Tristan Mimigan. From Spotswood, Ms. Veronica Perez. From Elkton Elementary and East Rock, Ms. Kim Phillips does both of these schools. And Riverbend and Audubon, Ms. Teresa Warner was also on the trip. From SHS in Wilbur, Pence, Abby Huffman also went, all from Rockingham County. So thank you, Dr. Alicia Correll-Clark, for making me aware of the trip to DC. It was a fun trip. One of the, one of the highlights, being at the, the History Museum, is they had a, the part of the stage from Woodstock. I mean, it was, you could stand on it, it had, it was, it was there. And so that was pretty cool to see the original stage from Woodstock in there. And there was a number of things that are in there that was amazing to look at that night, but, or that day. But I thank you to all our ELs and teachers, all the hard work that you put in to our kids, and I really appreciate that. So that will conclude our board member highlights tonight. And we will get into number six on our list, list, which is action items. And the first on the list tonight is our minutes. And do I hear a motion to approve the minutes of the May 6, 2024?
I move we approve the minutes of the May 6, 2024 meeting as presented.
Thank you, Mrs. Laura. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Cave. Any questions, comments, board members? Hearing none, all those in favor say yes. Yes? All opposed, no? All right, motion passes 5-0. Next on our list tonight is field trips, and I believe Dr. Larry Shiflett has a recommendation for that.
Chair Carlson, board members, I have several field trips for your consideration. Massanut Technical Center, FFA State Convention, June 24th through 27th, four students to Virginia Tech, Blacksburg, Virginia. Broadway High School, FFA State Convention, June, June 24th through 27th, 32 students, Virginia Tech, Blacksburg, Virginia. And the TSA National Conference, June 25th to July 1st, 18 students, Orlando, Florida. And I do recommend approval of these field trips.
Wow. All right. Board members hearing the superintendent's recommendation, do I hear a motion for that recommendation?
I move to follow superintendent's recommendation to approve the field trips as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Hurst. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Burgley. Any questions, comments? How many did you say is going to Orlando?
Thirty, thirty-two.
Thirty-two?
Thirty, no, no, 18 to Orlando, 32 to Blacksburg.
Okay, great. All right, hope they have fun. I'm, any question, any other questions, comments?
I, I have a comment.
Go ahead.
I'm going to abstain from this vote because it's not unusual for me to go on field trips. But you'll note that for the MTC FFA field trip, I am the sole chaperone because that, the MTC advisor is going to be in Scotland. So in order for the kids to go, I'm going to go with them, but with another chapter. But, so I will be abstaining from this vote tonight.
Okay, we'll recognize your abstention. Any other questions, comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Yes, all opposed, no? Motion passes 4-1 with, 4-0 with one abstention.
Yeah.
All right.
Call for abstention real quick.
Call for, all right. Do I have any abstentions?
Abstain.
Okay, thanks for the one.
Okay, now we're good.
Thank you. All right, next is the authorization of signatures in absence of the superintendent 2024, 2025. And Dr. Shiflett has this as well.
Yes, I recommend the approval and authorization of Doug Aldifer, Assistant Superintendent of Leadership and Academic Support, and Justin Moyers, Chief Financial Officer, to sign all VDOE reports, documents, requisitions, and other official correspondence in the absence of the superintendent through June 30th, 2025.
Thank you, Dr. Shiflett. Board members hearing the superintendent's recommendation, do I hear a motion?
I move we follow the superintendent's recommendation to approve the unauthorized Doug Aldifer and Justin Moyers for all VDE reports, documents, requisitions, and all other official correspondence in the absence of the superintendent through June 30th, 2025.
Thank you, Ms. Laura. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Hurst. Any questions, comments? And this is something we do every year, correct? Dr. Shiflett?
Yes, sir.
All right. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no? Motion passes 5-0. All right, next on the list tonight is Mr. Justin Moyers, going to be talking about, or have something for salary scale, sorry.
This evening, I have before you the salary scales for the 2024, 2025 school year. We would like to have these passed tonight so that we can issue contracts in the next week. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have. It does reflect the 3% salary increase that you passed in the budget.
All right.
Chair Carlson, board members, I recommend approval of the salary scale for the fiscal year 2025 as presented by Justin Moyers, Chief Financial Officer.
Thank you, Dr. Shiflett. Do I have a motion, board members?
I move to follow the superintendent's recommendation to approve the salary scales for fiscal year 2025 as presented by Justin Moyers, Chief Financial Officer.
Thank you, Ms. Cave. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, I'm going to go with Hurst on that. That was pretty close. Any questions, comments, board members? All right, hearing none, all those in favor say yes. Yes?
Yes.
All opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on our list tonight is the co-op food bid renewal for 2024, 2025. Ms. Jennifer Williams.
All right, good evening, Chairman Cross, members of the board, and Dr. Shiflett. I'm here tonight to present on Action Item E on tonight's agenda, which covers the bid for full service provision of food and paper products for school year 24, 25, for Rockingham County Schools Food Nutrition Services. For our main food and paper product service, we are, we're a member and the bid holder of the Blue Ridge Group of the Shenandoah School Food Service Buying Co-op, which is comprised of Augusta County, Harrisonburg City, Stanton City, Wayans, Waynesboro City, and Nelson County schools. So the co-op, we properly went out to bid last spring for this school year, 23, 24, through formal sealed bid procedures. And the bid was awarded to Merchants Grocery Company for this school year. The terms of this contract state that the contract may be renewed for a period of up to four successive contract periods. So after review and consideration by all members of the food buying co-op, my recommendation, along with the unanimous support of co-op members, is that Merchants Grocery Company be awarded the renewal bid for food and paper products for school year 24, 25.
Chairman Carlson, board members, I do recommend approval of the Blue Ridge Co-op Food Bid Renewal for the 2024, 2025, as presented by Jennifer Williams, Supervisor of Food and Nutrition Services.
Thank you, Dr. Shiflett. Board members, do I have a motion?
I move to follow the superintendent's recommendation to award, oops, I'm on the wrong one, sorry. I follow the superintendent's recommendation.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Laura. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Hurst. Any questions, comments?
I have questions.
All right, Ms. Cave?
So I asked you earlier today, and thank you so much for getting those numbers to me, to send me the amounts last year that the bids came in for Merchants and for Cisco. Those amounts that you sent me, like for Merchants, it was 7.3 million. Is that, that just our school division?
That's for all the school divisions.
That was for all of them. How do we know what we're?
Yeah, so this year, so, so far, we've spent about 1.7 million with Merchants. So that's about what we were at last year.
Okay. How long do we have to approve this? The reason that I ask is because, you know, our agenda's not built out months in advance. And so I didn't actually see this on the agenda last week when I started looking at the other items. And I feel like I'm not educated enough on it to make a good decision on it tonight. So is this something that you have to have an answer on tonight?
The earliest we can get it back to our vendor, then the better service we can get because they start ordering the food now for, to make sure it's in supply in the summer.
Right.
For the fall.
Okay. Was the sole reason that we switched from Cisco to Merchants, was it just price?
So we go by, when we go out to bid, we go by, it's an all or nothing, so we go by that bottom line price. So we follow, so most of our money is federal money, so we have to follow federal procurement procedures, we follow state procurement procedures, and our local school and county procedures. So it was all followed very closely. As you can see in those documents, you know, we went line by line through all 425 items.
Right.
And we made our decision based on that and that bottom line price.
Just based on the amount?
Yep.
Were there ever any problems with Cisco?
You know, we've, the past few years, you know, anyone working in food service can say there have been plenty of problems, but that's kind of across the board.
Right.
We had, I mean, I don't want to, you know, I think with Cisco, we worked well with them and we've worked well with Merchants as well.
Right, okay. I, I'm just asking because I, you know, coming on the board in January, immediately I start getting, you know, calls about the food quality. And so it's just, it's something I just, I wish we as a board could have had time to really look at before we commit to another year of, of what we've had. And, and I know that you're never going to like please anybody, so it's, you know, it's nothing, or I mean, we're never going to please everyone. But it's just something I wish we'd had more time to look at and think about because this was a decision made by the previous board to, to move to Merchants. And I mean, I specifically have had a lot of people, but not just parents, but employees as well, say, you know, no, no one complained about the food when it was Cisco and the food was better there. And you know what I'm saying? Like, it may be that school food is like hospital food. I mean, I don't know, but I just know that there were lots of complaints. And I, and I wonder if it was only, if price was the only reason that we switched, you know, was it a significant amount? And I noticed that on the memo that you sent, there's an increase this year, right?
Yes.
So we're in it for four, we could renew the bid for four years, but that didn't mean that the price was going to stay the same, correct?
Correct.
So it's going up already in the first year. And what was it, was it 2%?
Yes.
Okay.
On average.
I just, so in regards to Cisco versus Merchants, so we have a bid list of four, those 425
items. And so all of those items, you'll see a lot of those are the same, switching from Cisco to Merchants. And so before this year with Merchants, we were with Cisco, it was either two or three years. COVID kind of gets crumbled there together. And before that, we were with Merchants. So it's kind of, it goes, it goes back and forth just depending on who gets the lowest bid. There are many other school districts in Virginia who also source from Merchants. And yeah, I could just go back to that bid list, how it is.
But there are some that still are with Cisco as well, right?
Yes.
Is Shenandoah County one of those?
Yes. Yep.
I just, as a board, I wish that we, you know, I know we have to have food. Like, I get it that it's really important, but I just, I wish that we could talk about it a little bit more as a board before we, before we decide.
Um, how, how soon do you need this in? I know you said the sooner the better.
Yeah, the sooner the better. I hope it's, yeah.
So just procurement-wise, just to kind of fill in some blanks, if we were to reject this, which we could, we would have to put this back out to bid and start the whole process over and go away from the consortium. So we're probably looking at at least two months before we could bring back a decision. And even then, if Cisco was not the lowest, it would be tough to justify giving it back to them again. So it would make it very difficult on our end to do so.
Okay.
I have a question.
Okay.
So Merchants is our sole provider for everything? Or do you have other vendors?
We have other vendors.
So they're not the sole, it's just a large portion?
Correct.
How long have we been part of the Blue Ridge Co-op?
So that, I would say 20-plus years.
It's been a while.
It's been a while.
It's been a minute, okay. And how long has that co-op been recommending Merchants?
So it, I guess, like I said, it just kind of depends on, I mean, before this school year, we were with Cisco for three years. So it just kind of depends on who has the lowest bid.
We're just going with low bid.
Yep.
Yep.
Yeah.
All right, I'm, let's do this, Ms. Williams, let's set a time up where board members can set a time with Dr. Shiflett and you and kind of talk over next year's plans on what we're doing. That way we can kind of get more involved in the details in this. And I would hate not to vote on this tonight and have two months of waiting time and by chance get behind on the next school year. So if we do have a motion on the table tonight, and any other questions or comments on that?
So we're going to vote on the motion on the floor?
Yes.
Okay.
Ms. Burglawn, did you have a?
Yeah, I appreciate Ms. Cave's sentiment to keep it local, because I think that's really important to everybody here. And I'm ready to vote on this for sure. But I definitely like the idea of keeping it local. But I know from your last presentation, you did say a lot of, you know, fruits and vegetables and things like that, you try to get as local as possible, which I think is awesome. One thing that I did have a question about was, and we can talk about this later, but just to throw it out there, is those 425 items. One complaint that I had heard through, you know, through my time here was things that are out of stock, right? So if we bid for one type of hot dog bun, right, and that's the one, that's it, right? And if it's out of stock, there's, it's difficult to switch or to, I guess they have to harass you and ask for permission to get a different item. Is that correct?
Our, so Merchants, they provide us with out of stock, an out of stock list, an out of stock, out of stock options for us, yes.
Because I knew that was a complaint, even with, with all companies, things being out of stock. I've worked in restaurants, I know that it's not always there.
That was a major problem the past few years before this.
Right, and that was just the concern that was brought to me that I just wanted to mention. Maybe being able to approve some other options, alternative options, if, you know, down the road, not this year, but maybe, maybe next year.
Yeah, and a note on the local, if I can speak on that. I mean, this is our, this is our main grocery bid, so it's kind of, you know, it's there for, to cover all of our things. But then we still have, we source produce from Standard Produce in Charlottesville. We purchase lettuce from here in Rockingham County. And in regards to Merchants, so it is based, it is a Virginia-based, a Virginia-owned company. They are locally, they started in Virginia, whereas Cisco is all across the country. And then, yeah, we do, so we source the local lettuce, like I said, and then we also have produce that comes from across Virginia when it is available. So we do have other vendors that we do source from besides Merchants.
Yeah, I think what you're hearing tonight is just a sentiment of the board that really wants to make sure that we're spending our tax dollars locally. And so putting together a meeting with you, Dr. Shiflett, and be able to go over next year's planning would be great for us, because it is high on our priority as a board that we make sure that we spend as local as possible. So there is a motion on the floor, any other questions, comments?
Help me remember, I know we've got several more contracts coming up to us, like milk, juice, ice cream.
And produce.
And produce, all come as a separate thing.
Yes.
So we will be seeing those usually next month?
Yes, June 10th.
And I would expect we'll be talking with you soon, before that.
So if you want input on those before our next meeting?
Yep.
Okay.
All right, any other questions, comments? All right, board members, will you say the motion one more time?
Chair Carlson, board members, I recommend approval of the Blue Ridge Co-op Food Bid Renewal for the 2024, 2025, as presented by Jennifer Williams Supervisor of Food and Nutrition Services.
All right, all those in favor say yes. Yes, all opposed? All right, motion passes five oh. Thank you, Ms. Williams. Next on our list tonight is bid recommendation, paving track at J. Frank Hilliard Middle School, and Mr. Justin Moyers has that.
I'm calling for Mr. Steve Reed tonight, he had a baseball game. So we advertised, or paved the track at John, J. Frank Hilliard Middle School. We sent it to seven firms, we're sent bid packages. It was properly advertised and specified. One firm responded with Partners Escavating at $65,776. We would like to ask you to make a recommendation to approve this contract from Partners.
Chair Carlson, board members, I recommend awarding the bid for the repaving the track at J. Frank Hilliard Middle School to the lowest bidder as submitted by Partners Escavating and as presented by Justin Moyers, Chief Financial Officer.
Thank you, Dr. Shiflett, board members, hearing the superintendent's recommendation. Do I hear a motion to follow that?
I move to follow the superintendent's recommendation to award the bid for repaving the track at J. Frank Hilliard Middle School to the lowest bidder as submitted by Partners Escavating.
Thank you, Ms. Burglawn, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, thank you, Ms. Lor. Any questions, comments? Go ahead, Ms. Cave, it's all right.
Did you say seven, we sent out seven?
Yes.
Only one responded? I mean, is that normal?
For something like this, yes, because it's not very big, it's not very wide. So the, so just people that are paving roads don't really want to make, waste their time with the track. So it's harder, it's harder to find people to do smaller jobs like that. We've had something similar with some of our other projects.
Good question. Any other questions, comments, board members? Hearing none, all those in favor say yes. Yes, all opposed, no? All right, motion passes five oh.
Thank you.
Mr. Moyers, appreciate it. All right, last action item on tonight's list is the superintendent's recommendation, supplementary, supplementary, sorry, materials.
Chairman Carlson, board members, upon review by the Content Review Committee, in accordance with RCPS Policy II ABB, I recommend retaining Drama by Raina Telgemeyer, The Heartstopper Series Volumes 1 through 4 by Alice Osmund, and All American Boys by Jason Reynolds, as these books do not contain sexually explicit content as that term is defined in RCPS Policy II ABA.
All right, will you list those three books one more time?
Drama, The Heartstopper Series Volumes 1 through 4, and All American Boys.
Okay. Board members, hearing the superintendent's recommendation, do I have a motion to follow that recommendation?
I move to follow the superintendent's recommendation to retain Drama, The Heartstopper Series, and All American Boys, as these books do not contain sexually explicit content as that term is defined in RCPS Policy II ABA.
Thank you, Ms. Hurst, do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Burglawn, thank you. Any questions, comments?
I have questions and comments.
You're all right.
Dr. Shiflett, were all of these books read by the Content Review Committee?
Yes, ma'am.
Was there any discussion, I know you guys had good conversation about them, was there any discussion with regard to the book Drama of moving, that's in at least one, I don't recall how many elementary schools, but at least one, was there any discussion about moving that book from the elementary school to the middle school?
The Content Review Committee had some conversations about maybe the developmentally appropriate nature of some of these books. However, we are trying to adhere to the school board's policy in waiving them and critiquing them on sexually explicit content only. I did seek some counsel from Daniel Rose, our attorney, to make sure we were in line with that. And his recommendation from a practical and legal standpoint is to, for the Content Review Committee to look at books for sexually explicit content only, and then for any other concerns, we would use the other policy where it would be challenged. Then at the school level, there would be a committee that would first look at it and then it would move up to the next level. So although we've had some conversations about some of the content of the books, it always comes back to the question, is any of the material sexually explicit in nature? And if it isn't, then the recommendation, and I would concur, is that it would be returned.
I guess I just, you know, I understand the policy, and I helped craft it, and I get it. So I actually read every single book on this, on your list tonight, and I would agree that they do not have sexually explicit content. I guess when I was thinking about it, though, just to try to put it into perspective, I was thinking if, you know, if my kids came in from outside and, you know, my daughter complained that, you know, her brother kicked her, and the brother came in and said, no, I didn't kick her, I bit her. And I always said, oh, okay, well, you're not in trouble then, because she said that, you know, you kicked her, but if you didn't do that, then you're not in trouble. Even though he bit her and he should be in trouble for that, it's like you could apply the same thing in thinking that, I get it, it doesn't have any sexually explicit content, but can we, you know, come together as adults and say, you know, in looking at this, maybe it's not appropriate for a fifth grader? I mean, this book, you know, it's nothing like some of the ones that we're going to review. But it was seventh and eighth grade characters in the book. Like, it literally, it is a middle school book. It's marketed for middle schoolers. And I can make the same argument with The Heartstopper Series, that's in our middle schools. And really, that's, that was more 11th and 12th graders, it might have been some 10th, but you know, that, those were high schoolers that all of those books were about. So, but I'm not even going to argue that point tonight, because as you get older, you know, kids mature differently. Some kids in middle school are more mature than those, you know, than others. So I wouldn't even, I guess, I'm not even talking about The Heartstopper Series, but I guess Drama just bothered me, because I, I thought about it. It's not a book that rocked my world. But I went back to think, what was I feeling when I was in fifth grade? What were the things that made me nervous about my school day? Or what were the things that, you know, I didn't understand? Or that I really needed my parents to guide me through? And not a book, you know, and not, you know, a school counselor or someone that didn't know me that well at the school, or whatever. And I think I shared with you, Dr. Shiflett, earlier in the week about, you know, just my own, like, things that I did in fifth grade that if the teacher called me out for, I would just, I would have just died. Because that was my mindset in fifth grade, was like, oh, I don't want to be, that topic is too heavy for me, or I would be humiliated, or whatever. I'm just trying to think about what kind of content is too heavy for a fifth grader. And I don't know that we have any guarantee that a fourth grader or a third grader couldn't get their hands, you know, on that book. And again, I know what I'm going to face by saying all this tonight, but I just, you know, some of it, I'm saying, just to put it towards the public, you know, that just because we have policies in place and you did your job in November and you put good board members on your local school board, that doesn't mean that we can fix everything. It doesn't mean that you can abdicate your responsibility as a parent, because we can put policies in place that we believe reflect our values as a community. But as parents, you guys have to be there to make sure that those things are working appropriately and all the wheels are turning like they should. So I just, I say all that to say, I wish there had been some discussion about possibly moving that book to the middle school. I just think the content is better for middle schoolers, I really do. And so I would not vote no on this tonight to any of the other books, The Heartstopper Series or, you know, All American Boys. But I'm going to vote no to this, because I really feel like in my heart to represent the people in my community and my district. And they would agree with me, I think, the majority, to move that book to the middle school. And so if that's not a part of the motion, I'm going to vote no on that. But it's not to do with any of the other books, it's just that one in specific. And it really is just to protect fifth graders.
Thank you, Ms. Cave, for that, and I understand your sentiment, what you're saying there. These, these books are being looked at at the moment for sexually explicit material in the books. It doesn't mean, you correct me, if I'm wrong, Dr. Shiflett, it doesn't, it doesn't mean that they can't be challenged for age appropriateness or inside the schools at some point either, correct?
Absolutely, if, you know, a parent or teacher or staff member feels like, you know, something is maybe developmentally inappropriate or what have you, they could fill out the complaint form and it would go through the process. It's just that particular process is a different lens from the Content Review Committee. And so we're trying to, you know, we use, sort of use the analogy, it's sort of like two buckets. And so the one bucket is just looking at books with sexually explicit content, yes or no. And then the other one would be any other concern, whether we think it's developmentally inappropriate, if it's too much violence, too much language, what have you. There could be any concern that any, any parent may want to bring forth. And so, yes, they can still be, you know, challenged for other reasons. It's just the Content Review Committee is just looking for sexually explicit material.
Gotcha.
Yep.
Thank you, thank you for that tonight. And that's important for the public and the parents and for the public to hear tonight as well. So thank you for that. And thank you, Ms. Cave, for bringing your thoughts up. I always want to encourage all the board members to be able to speak up and, and speak what's on your heart. That's why we have these meetings, and it's for us to be able to talk over these issues. I know we have the public here tonight, but this is a working session for your local school board and government. So thank you for bringing that up, and thank you for allowing the public to be able to know where you stand on these issues or why you vote. A lot of times, we, we vote no on things. Sometimes I try to do my best as a board member to explain why I may vote no on a certain particular topic. I remember the last two years, I, previous, I didn't vote for the school budget. And the reason why I didn't was because of school safety, things as in SROs and other things I wanted to see in the budget wasn't in there, didn't make it. So for principal stance, I did vote no, and, but I did tell the public why I voted no on that. So thank you for sharing your comments tonight, and I appreciate that. Any other questions or comments, board members? Hearing none, all those in favor say yes. Yes? All opposed?
No.
All right, motion passes four one. And that was the last of our action items here tonight. The next we're getting ready to go into is information items. And first on our list tonight is elementary school counseling program.
Good evening, Chair Cross, members of the board, Dr. Shiflett, thank you so much for the opportunity to bring another FYI your way. Tonight, I have some wonderful guests with me who are going to do most of the presentation and so much better than I ever could, because they are the real experts. Tonight, we're going to talk just a little bit about elementary school counseling in RCPS. We have 22 elementary counselors serving 15 elementary schools. Many of them have a variety of certifications, but at the bare minimum, in order to be a school counselor in RCPS, you would need to at least have a master's degree. Tonight for our presentation, Amy Hull, School Counselor at John C. Myers, and Heather Kirkland, School Counselor at Linville Edom, and Kristen Hensley, fifth grade teacher at John C., are going to talk to you a little bit about what an elementary school counselor's day looks like at school. You'll see these seven categories of time that the DOE uses that they call direct service from counselors. You might remember that at the last meeting, we heard from some folks from the red zone about our behavioral threat assessment. And so today, we're going to go to the green zone, so that you get to see folks from all over the county. And next, we'll hit the blue and the black zones. So we won't leave them out for the next presentations.
Thank you very much. I'm going to start off by talking about, just a little bit about individual, small groups in crisis, and just give you a little blurb about what that looks like in an elementary school. Individual counseling can be referred by a parent, by a teacher, self-observation, anyone in the building, or it can be self-referred by a student. And so what we do as school counselors is we meet with those individuals and see what the need is. We use a lot of goal-focused interventions and brief counseling. The difference than we are than an LPC, a Licensed Professional Counselor, is that that is someone that actually will provide a diagnosis to a student. That's like your outside counseling services that you would see outside in the community. And so for individual, we usually see children between four to six weeks, and that goes along with small groups as well. Some of the small groups that we run, we do some grief counseling groups, we do divorce, anxiety, social skills, basically whatever the need is in the, in the area at that time, and whatever we pull from students that teachers are finding that they need assistance with. The crisis intervention part comes in when we do self-harm assessments. Unfortunately, at elementary school level, you wouldn't think that that's something that you deal with, but we do with that pretty commonly, actually. And we talk about sending children out for crisis interventions, and we do assessments in the school. We do a lot of conflict resolutions. And I'm thankful at John C. Myers, Kristen will talk about it earlier, we do a community circle that's helped to work out some conflict resolutions. But when it needs to go further, we just sit down and two students will talk about it. And a lot of my fifth graders can do it with just me sitting there. It's just needing the space to be able to talk and resolve some problems. A lot, so I tell them a lot of times, they do that better than adults could do. And so we, we work on what that looks like and giving each other feedback and being active listeners. And so when we need extra services, when we feel like we have exhausted our avenues for four to six weeks of seeing a small group, individuals, then we'll refer out to different counselors in the community and try to touch parents to see what the need is and what the availability is and insurance. And so we kind of play the middle man. the middleman, and trying to refer them to the best agency possible, because, um, and trying to find a therapist in the community that actually has openings, and the waiting list isn't so long, so a lot of times, we, um, help, and help the parent take that out, and help them assist with that, so that way, they don't have to, um, kinda get stuck in the middle, as a parent, you're, you want the best for your child, and so, you're thinking, you're not thinking about all the phone numbers and addresses and everything, and so, we try to really take out, um, the middle part to assist with that.
So, as elementary, uh, school counselors, it's our responsibility and privilege to deliver classroom guidance lessons, and promote division-wide thematic activities within our school, every student in our building takes part in classroom guidance lessons, we call this a tier-one intervention, meaning that as school counselors, we have the opportunity to impact, guide, and encourage every student at our school through this time together, just like classroom guidance have a scope and sequence to their subject matter, as school counselors, we also have a very specific and intentional set of guidelines and learning standards that we use to ensure student success, as school counselors, we use the American Schools Counselor Association's mindset and behaviors, an example of an ASCA standard would be, um, Behavior Learning Standard Nine, which is decision-making informed by gathering evidence, getting others' perspectives, and recognizing personal bias, the VDOE adopted in 2021 guidance standards that we use to target and guide our classroom guidance lessons, and an example of a VDOE guidance standard would be Self-Management Mindset One, which is for grades three and four, um, I can describe how I can use courage and perseverance to overcome a challowing, challenging situation, and lastly, we use, we crosswalk both of these standards, or blend both of these standards with a Virginia SOL, so I'd like to show you a sample lesson, if you would hover over the crosswalk with Virginia SOL standard, um, you can click on that, and there should be one of my sample lesson plans there, um, and this was a kindergarten lesson, if you just scroll down just a little bit, um, on both sides, on the left side, you see the ASCA standard, and, um, the Virginia, um, guidance standard, and on the right, you see the academic crosswalk, um, for this lesson, um, I crosswalk with Language Arts K-5B and Language Arts K-7A, so students can identify the front cover, back cover, and title of the, of the book, and identify and name the uppercase and lowercase letters of the alphabet, um, along with the ASCA mindset standards and our Virginia standards.
One thing that's important to point out, related to the curriculum, lessons, and activities, is, um, as you know, our fifteen elementary schools in Rockingham County have a wide variety, right, they come from very small to very large, and our staffing ratios are different, so, um, those lessons, as far as like how often are school counselors able to get into each classroom, it's on a different schedule and rotation, and, um, part of that is just because how many minutes are in the school day versus, um, what staff are able to provide those things, and we have been working as a, um, central office, working with elementary principals to have a more standardized elementary school schedule, so, um, we look forward to, uh, developing that work a little more.
So, this slide will show you some consultation, collaboration, and referrals, and, um, I'm just gonna touch briefly, I'm not gonna read everything, but the consultation, uh, we, we work a lot with Department of Social Services and CPS, we work a lot with Gardima Lightums, um, we, we do at times go into court to represent the student and, and the things that we've observed, we attend FAP meetings, um, we are in close connection with the Mercy House, um, Collins Center, food banks, parking rack, anything that we can help, um, outside in the community to tie in the, as a whole student, that we think would benefit the child, not just academics, um, but a part of the social, social skills, emotional skills that they might need, um, we, we reach out to a lot of different consultation, um, to, to help them with their needs, um, one of the other things that we do is just referrals and Community Service Board, we, I probably talk to them about every other day, um, and so, we just collaborate with each other with a release of information, it gives me a chance to talk to their counselor, and their counselor can talk to me, because I'm the one seeing the student in the building more than an hour session, and so, we collaborate with one another to see what goals that they have, what goals I can work on, and so, um, it just helps the whole, the whole child, um, with just everything within the school and outside of the school, um, the collaboration piece that we do, um, is working obviously with teachers, we work with BSAs, we work with other school counselors if we're needing assistance, um, Linville Edom Ruitons, um, a lot of community networks, Hope Distribution, um, we, we work with them a lot during Thanksgiving and Christmas for our food boxes, um, faith-based organizations, they help us with snack bags, which provides a snack bag for, um, students in need every single Friday, and, um, that's a lot of food, and that is a lot, a big cost, um, and so, that's the financial burden that's taken off the school, and, when we reach out to different organizations, um, we, um, work a lot with different food pantries, clothes closets, so, a lot of what we do, um, is a lot of behind-the-scenes things, and not just in the classroom, and not just walking down the hallways, it's a lot of phone call and, uh, collaboration, but, um, I think one reason that we enjoy our job is because we enjoy networking, and we enjoy making the child, um, successful, not in, not only in the school atmosphere, but also in our community as a standard, um, person in our community.
So, one of the main things as a fifth grade teacher that Ms. Hull and counselors in all elementary schools help with is something called Community Circle, so this is a time where kids come together and literally sit in a circle, and we talk about our feelings, and we talk about positive things that are happening in our classroom, and negative things that are happening, and so, if a concern gets brought up amongst the kids, and it's not something that they're really working towards in an appropriate way, I can call Ms. Hull in to kind of guide them in the right direction on how to resolve that conflict, or resolve that concern in the right way, and she gives them the skills to be able to do that on their own in the future, if she, if they were to get in that situation again, um, if there's a topic or a skill that I think my fifth graders really need some support on, because I'm seeing like a lot of issues in that area, I can call Ms. Hull in, and she'll do sort of a team teaching lesson, um, just recently, we did a boundaries lesson, where, you know, fifth graders love to be in each other's space, and so, we took a hula hoop and said, "This is your bubble, this might seem a little juvenile for fifth graders," but it really helped them to understand, like, you know, you have to ask if your friend wants a hug, some friends love hugs, some friends don't, and if you kind of need your personal space bubble, then pretend you have a hula hoop, and so, Ms. Hull was able to help me kind of reiterate that in a way that the kids would understand better, and she's just been a great support system on things that I might not be an expert on.
Appraisal and advisement means that as school counselors, we get the opportunity to help students understand and discover their natural abilities, talents, interests, and skills, we help them make goals that have the potential to influence their decision-making so that they can shine bright in our world through their future career, so as school counselors, we help students in a variety of ways, each school year, we take fifth grade students on a field trip to Mass Nan Technical Center, this field trip not only gives them the opportunity to see, and in some cases, take part in hands-on learning, it also allows us as school counselors, the opportunity to talk with our students, and on how to set short-term and long-term goals, to guide them to get where they want to be for their future career, many of our school counselors host a career day, Jackie Dunsmore at South River, um, held a career day this school year, she invited community members onto the school grounds to showcase their career, which allows students to dream about their future, and ask questions to those already in their interested career path, lastly, school counselors use an online career and college readiness platform called Major Clarity, at the elementary level, each fourth and fifth grade student have a Major Clarity account. Once they log in, our students take a fifty-question assessment that assesses them on their likes and their dislikes, and their interests and their disinterest, once they, once they complete this, each student has a personalized career assessment score percentage for each of the sixteen career clusters, on this slide, you will see what our students see after they complete their assessment and have their percentage score, this is the world map to which students can click on each region, and hear about different careers in that specific career cluster, for illustration, fourth grade student at Linville Edom took this career assessment and scored twenty-five percent in the human services career cluster, they would then click on that career cluster, and hear from a variety of animated people, such as a personal trainer, social worker, therapist, talk about what a day in the life of their career would be like, the goal is for each student, regardless of their percentage score, to visit each region to learn more about their career cluster, as school counselors, we desire for our students not just to pick any career, we want our students, students to pursue, dream, and discover what they are truly passionate about, and what is meaningful to them, and it is our privilege to help them start this journey and discovery. Alright, on our next slide, we are gonna talk about program planning and school supports, school counselors plan, assist, and implement school programs, such as Myers Motivators, and Panther PAC, which stands for Positive Adults Caring for Kids, and these programs are designed to contribute to the, to a positive school climate by inviting, um, approved, um, moms, dads, guardians, grandparents into our school building to volunteer, um, to contribute to, um, our school family, we also strive to make connections between home and school by providing opportunities for healthy relationships between these two, home and school, coffee with the counselor, smore lu- smore newsletters are just a few ways we communicate with families regarding topics that are important to their child's social development or emotional development needs, and each school coun- counselor within our county has their own unique and creative ways to connect home and to connect to school, we are grateful to make the school-home connection a positive and healthy one.
If you take a look at, um, school clubs and investments in students, this is one of, one of my absolute favorite, um, things to do in the school system, is to just hear from the children about what do you want, what club do you want, it's, um, you know, they really, a lot of kids don't have access to many different things, so when we can keep them after school and get them home with transportation, this is an avenue that just opens a whole new world for them, and so, my part is to figure out, what do the kids want, what, what kinda clubs do they want, um, and so, um, Linville Edom has Linville eaters, leaders, we have SCA representatives that we have, we had, I think, um, sixteen SCA members, um, we just finished up, uh, cleaning at the park and pizza, and so, these are just leaders that will now go onto the middle school, and actually have tried to, um, apply for different leadership roles at J. Frank, one of the really, um, neat programs I started at three years ago was, uh, it's called Game Changers, um, just because it was named by a student, and he liked it, so I left it, um, basically, every Wednesday morning, an older student is a mentor to a younger student, and so, we're working on leadership, um, roles with the older student, we're look, working on self-confidence, um, many of these students come to, on Wednesday morning, and they go to Game Changers, and it's a time where they come in, they eat their breakfast, they hang out with their buddy, um, and just talk about what's going on this week, what happened over the weekend, and I can guarantee you, for my, um, truancy children that don't like to come to school, Wednesday will be a day that will not miss, um, and they actually get sad if I have to cancel it for some reason, and so, it's also just a positive reinforcement to get kids in the building, um, and if they do, this morning, actually, I had a student that came in, and she was having a very bad day, it was a kindergartner, and today, thankfully, we changed it to Monday, Game Changers because of SOLs, and she thrived through the whole rest of her day, um, and I have to say that it was because of her buddy and the, and the attention that she got when she first walked into the building, and so, anything that we can do as counselors to provide, um, any sort of enhancement for students, and for them to be leaders in their community and in our school, to help out younger leaders, um, to become later in their fifth grade year, is what we try to do, um, with different clubs, um, lastly, is school, school and family needs, um, Linville Edom did a wonderful job with a yard sale, that was just a huge success for, um, the Hassler family, um, and so, we're always looking at things that we can do to reach out and pull the community into the school, and we can just do a lot of partnership with them, um, we do a holiday shop every Christmas, I have sta- uh, I have, um, staff bring in their leftovers, whatever they wanna get rid of, gently-used items, and then every, every student in our building gets to shop for one family member, um, and just to see the excitement that kids have, the power and the means to get something for a family member that they wouldn't normally have, um, is just really empowering for the children, um, snack bag programs, I mentioned before, we also have a hygiene closet, and I've had kids to come to me, and obviously, they need, they just woke up out of bed, their hair wasn't brushed, the teeth wasn't brushed, um, maybe they didn't take a bath, and so, we just provide all kinds of hygiene needs, and we, the kid can, um, can go in and take care of themselves, and just get them ready for the day, we, our main focus, um, with, with a lot of the programs that we do, is getting the kids in the building, um, just because, for whatever reason, they, they struggle, and we just wanna be that person that is the connector between home and school, and then the teachers obviously can take the reins throughout the day, so, um, I think that's right, yeah, thank you.
Thank you so much to Ms. Hull, and Ms. Kirkland, and Ms. Hensley for, uh, coming this evening, I wish that I could've brought every single one of the school counselors, because, um, although, you might not have wanted to be here that whole time, um, but they all have such wonderful examples of these programs, and the ways, um, you know, the, the Linville leaders, and, um, SCA at John C., like, there are these leadership opportunities, and there's one at every elementary school, um, but they have to- told such wonderful, powerful stories of the ways that they, um, um, help keep more kids in the building more often, and more available for learning, and the ways that they go the extra mile to coordinate the programs, um, both that develop leadership in the older students, and support for the younger students, and also the classroom support, so that a classroom teacher feels supported to be able to handle those tier-one kinds of behaviors, those conflicts that come in from recess, those kinds of things that can, um, sidetrack a lesson, um, but not if you have some healthy coping behaviors and strategies to use, so, the, the presentation ends with a few, uh, quotes, just from parents and from teachers about the great work that our school counselors do to help keep more kids available for learning more of the time, so thank you very much, thank you for listening.
Can we give them a hand tonight before we end here, real quick?
Any questions?
I, I wanna say thank you all for coming, uh, and presenting, uh, to the board tonight, Ms. Kirkland, Ms. Hull especially, um, thank you for the work that you do within our schools, and the time that you spend, uh, with our children, I know that comes with a heavy burden sometimes, the things that you hear and you see, and, uh, your thoughts and your prayers, uh, we have you covered as well, and just wanna say thank you for what you do, and the impact you're having on our community, and also the school climate inside your schools, as you mentioned tonight, so, again, it takes someone very special to, to do this job, and I wanna say thank you so much for what you do, it makes a huge impact, not only as a, a board member saying this tonight, but as a community member, and also as a parent, I wanna say thank you, so, uh, board members, before they leave, would you like to say? Okay, thank you guys so much for coming tonight and presenting, we really do appreciate it, thank you, Ms. Kaufman.
Thank you.
Alright. That's good stuff, thank you for coming tonight, Sharon, I'm, next on our list tonight, we're gonna end, I am, our meeting with, well, we're not gonna end it, well, that's public comment, then we'll go into the school board, uh, comments, but, uh, we are at that time of the night when there was public comment, so, the very first person on our list tonight is Ms. Lois Paul, you will have three minutes, I, I think, do we have it set up to where at thirty seconds where you hear a ding? Okay, so at thirty seconds, you will hear a ding, if you've never done this before, that lets you know you got thirty seconds left, and, uh, three minutes, we ask you that you would, um, tie things up, so thank you, thank you, Ms. Lois Paul, you're, you got the floor.
Thank you, Dr. Shiflett, Chairman Cross, and, uh, members of the board, uh, you've all been through, uh, twenty years of, 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 uh-
Turn your microphone on.
Edon?
That's, okay, I'll start over, uh, Dr. Shiflett, Chairman Cross, and members of the board, uh, we're nearing the end of the, uh, close of the school board, school year, and there have been many battles, and many issues, uh, but I thank you for standing strong with the, uh, with the people who, who voted you in, there, uh, there have been many issues that, uh, a lot of people didn't agree on, but I thank you for having the common sense to re- to remain true to the issues, and true to the values that you brought to the school board, I know each of you have had personal battles and public issues, but you, you gave your, your time, and your dedication, and the quality of the school board, uh, shows your efforts, and I wanna- And I want to thank Matt Cross for the leadership he's had in keeping the line and keeping parents informed about the issues that affect their children. Before COVID, a lot of parents were not aware what was going on in the schools. After these issues were brought to light, the school board didn't just sit on their hands and do nothing. They addressed the issues that were of importance to the parents and kept them involved. And I look forward to bigger and better things for our school board and for our schools in this next coming year. And thank you for maintaining common sense values in your decisions. God bless you all.
Thank you, Ms. Paul. Next on our list tonight is Hala Boger.
Is this on? Perfect. Before we begin, we're handing out our founding documents to each of you. Good evening. My name is Hala Boger. I'm a senior at East Rockingham High School, and I come to you as a representative and a founding member of the East Rockingham Division of the Student Advisory Council. The importance of the Student Advisory Council cannot be fully understood without discussing the previous work done through the Safe and Caring School Project of the 2022-2023 school year. This project began with juniors countywide coming together to highlight problems within our county we felt needed a change. It evolved into a group of seven Rockingham County students who presented an idea to the board that we felt could accomplish goals and leave a lasting impact on the school system. This idea was the Student Advisory Council. The Student Advisory Council represents students all across the county and is the voice of their concerns. Taking directly from our founding document, the mission of the RCPS Student Advisory Council is to allow student stakeholders to have a voice in decisions that impact their education, as well as to have input before policies are implemented. The Student Advisory Council is set to meet regularly within the school with the superintendent four times each year and with the school board twice a year. These meetings bring the student body's concerns before the superintendent and the school board. This allows student voices to be at the forefront of all conversations that impact us. While not all schools have fully established councils, we have worked hard at East Rock to establish our program, and we know other schools are working towards the same goal. We've already seen the positive impacts of the SAC at our school. Through the council, we have taken the first steps in establishing honor societies in every school in the county, such as math, science, English, and art national honor societies. Currently, all schools have some honor societies, but not all schools offer all of them. By making the offerings equal at all RCPS high schools, all RCPS students will have the same opportunities available. Another accomplishment from this year is changing the landing page for Chrome on our students' Chromebooks. Originally, the landing page led to the RCPS website. However, the information provided on the East Rockingham High School website, such as important dates, research resources, and other announcements catered specifically to East Rock students, weren't readily available to students and parents. Now, whenever students open a new tab on their Chromebook, it leads to the RCPS website, to the East Rock website, with many resources made available for students to be fully aware of what's happening in our school community. Another representative will continue where I left off.
We've also worked towards implementing a course and teacher survey, helping to bridge the teacher and student gap and creating an opportunity for communication by giving students a chance to answer questions relating to their experience in a class and with the teacher. Trial runs of this are happening this year, but we hope to fully implement surveys next year at East Rock. Another accomplishment was born of the Lee Eagle tradition at East Rock. Each week, a student is recognized who shows outstanding qualities and is a good representative of our school. As a council, when discussing teachers and their impacts on us, we decided to recognize a teacher once a month to highlight the qualities that make them a good educator and mentor to students at East Rock. This new tradition is titled Elite Eagle Staff, after our student-based program, Elite Eagles. And teachers are nominated for this honor by students much in the same way students are nominated for their title of Elite Eagle. In the next year and beyond, we will continue to make changes at a school-wide level that tackle problems specific to our school, as well as problems present at all of the county high schools. The Student Advisory Council has encouraged the growth of student voices at East Rock, and we are excited about all we will continue to accomplish. We cannot do this without you, though. Please consider implementing the Student Advisory Council into next year's school board meetings as it was designed. We want to communicate with you, and we want to see at the table when you make choices that impact us. Thank you for your time.
Guys, thank you guys for showing up and thank you for presenting tonight. I would also encourage you to reach out to your school board members as well. I had a great opportunity, meeting with Spotswood's Student Advisory Club, I think twice this year, and they had great questions. And so, I would just recommend to reach out to your District Five School Board Representative here at East Rock, and Mrs. Cave. I'm sure you would make time to come up here as well. So... Yes, that was not only him, but that was Mr. Beast in Beauty and the Beast and Mr. Sweeney, right? You did a great job, by the way. Can we give him a hand for that? You did a great, great job. We're going to miss you. Next on the list is, last tonight is Frank Doutter. Thank you for waiting. Appreciate it.
Is this thing working or not? Everyone can hear me? Okay, thank you. It's hard to tell sometimes. I want to come in and talk with you all just briefly about my observations of elementary guidance in the schools and why there is a need for that. My background, thinking about you folks, from working many years at JMU Administration and six years as a treasurer of a local congregation, married to a wonderful woman who was in the challenge program for eighteen years, and two of our sons graduated from Spotswood High School. I think I have a little bit of the understanding of some of the pressures that you guys face trying to make decisions about many different programs. But I want to share a little bit about what I have seen at Riverbend Elementary School, particularly as it relates to elementary guidance. First, when I finished parking, I spent a few moments asking the dear Lord for wisdom and love through how I interact with their children. I asked for guidance to identify and spend time with children with special needs that day. Sometimes, entering a classroom of eight-to-ten-year-olds is pretty scary, even to a seventy-two-year-old guy. The first thing that I noticed is that the children receive an amazing amount of love from the faculty, staff, and administrators. I'm just blown away by who these people are. I'm especially grateful to Ms. Maraskin, the guidance counselor. She's an amazing person, and you are very lucky to have her. My schedule is not that hard. I spend Wednesday mornings at Riverbend. I spend an hour and a half in a third-grade classroom with Mrs. Meg Amberg. Then I go for an hour and a half in a fourth-grade classroom of Ms. Misty Shiflett. I also spend about one hour with another child, who Ms. Maraskin told me that it would be helpful if I spent a little time with him. So, we do. And then after that, I go home and take a nap. So, why do I take a nap? What is it about I do that is a bit challenging? Sometimes, the teacher wants me to help with a child or children with specific educational tasks. I will sit with them at a table or pull up a chair near their desk, or sometimes I get down on the floor with them. As I help these children educationally, they occasionally share some of the challenges they face at school or at home. I'm not prying. I'm just listening and caring. I'm really not a very scary person for children, as they relate well to me, especially as I get down on their level. As appropriate, I share with Ms. Maraskin some challenging things I hear from a child. Some other observations, there are amazing leaders, teachers, and staff loving these kids. There's an excellent guidance program. It's stretched too thin. There are a lot of children with significant learning problems. A few children in fourth grade can only read simple sentences or do simple math problems. They receive a lot of help, excellent help, from people at the school, but they're really challenged. Sometimes, you know, learning problems are a symptom of underlying emotional problems or lack of stability. You know, Rockingham County, we are in a very amazing place.
Mr. Doutter, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
I've got about two more minutes.
No, yeah, you're at the end of the three minutes, but I just wanted to, I am going to give you extra time to finish tonight. I just ask you to say what you need to say.
I will, I will do that.
I didn't want to interrupt you, because I do, we're at the end of our list, and I do want to pay you the respect to be able to say.
Thank you, thank you very, very much. There's a lot of poverty and food insecurity in our county, and some of the children that we see are coming from those kinds of places. There's a lot of emotionality going on. I was talking with a young fourth grader the other day, and she just said, "Well, the first thing you need to know about me is I move a lot, like three or four schools." A lot of these kids have been in multiple schools. So, I believe there are many needs of children in our schools. And if I had any input on funding of elementary guidance, I'd probably double, but I'd certainly be supporting it. And, you know, I think it's hard to make decisions about other people, about programs and things, when there's so much to know. That's why I understand some of where you're coming from. It's really hard to know what's going on in the schools. So, that being said, I would like to invite each of you to come with me in the fall into Riverbend Elementary School and spend a morning with me, because I believe if you did that, you will leave with an amazing appreciation of the schools and what they're doing. Thank you very much for this chance.
You're welcome. And if you would, reach out to us. All of our emails are online, so reach out to us, all right? And listen to what your schedule is. All right, that comes to the conclusion of tonight's public comments. Thank you for everyone that came tonight, shared. That does lead us to board member comments tonight, and I will start with Ms. Burgling.
I just wanted to say thank you to everyone for being here and for our speakers tonight. I love the Student Advisory Committee, and that's something that I totally want to be a part of. And I think our students have such an important insight to what goes on in the schools. I think I look back at myself at sixteen, seventeen, and maybe wish people would have listened to me a little bit more. So, I love that idea. So, thank you, guys, and I definitely want to get on board with that and be a part of that in any way. I also want to thank Mr. Doherty, is that correct? Yeah? I completely agree with you, and I have had the privilege to be part of the Panther PAC and to help with some of these fundraisers. And my daughter has gotten to be a part of, it's really a small group, but she calls it Girls Lunch. So, I know that a lot of these are really important things, and I've been a part of them and have seen, you know, the backpack program that was a big concern of mine immediately, how I can support it better. I actually went to a food bank and brought Mrs. Kirkland a bunch of boxes of food before spring break. So, it's definitely on my radar, so know that that's something that I'm passionate about. And when you're packing a bag, a snack bag for the weekend, and it's got gummy snacks, a pudding cup, and a bag of chips, that really, as a mom, makes me concerned. So, I just want you to know that's definitely on my radar, but thank you.
Oh, Ms. Lor.
Just want to, I think most have left, but I'm going to shout out. Do we have our students, any students left tonight, a couple? Yay! Thank you, guys, for coming. I hope you learned some stuff. And I would ask you, but I totally know, twelve days, right? Twelve days left of school? Is it, I heard? No, it's four-four-four. So, but do seniors have any days off? I should know. So, really not much school left, just lots of fun left. Are you guys all seniors? Junior, ah, okay, so you enjoy all next year, and the rest of you enjoy the last couple of days. It's going to go by so quick. That's all I have. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Lor. Ms. Hurst?
Nothing here.
Ms. Cave?
I'll be brief, but I just had a constituent and someone I consider a friend this week. She thanked me for keeping the public in the loop. And so, I just wanted to say that a lot of what I said earlier when we were talking about the book recommendations and what books we were going to put back, I plan on saying at the end, but I just wanted to encourage parents to not consider policy a 100% fail-safe. It's not to be replaced by your presence. And I would just encourage parents to really be involved. And our world is so busy. Like, we're so, even, you know, as a mom, like, I get it, too, and I have to reel myself back in sometimes. And so, you know, I can imagine, and I have my four kids at home, and so, you know, I can imagine those that have, you know, one kid, two kid, you know, six, seven, you know, in the schools and trying to figure out what all of them's doing in all the different grades. But I would just say that just be involved in what your children are reading. And I'm still advocating for, you know, a system in the library that would email a parent every time a middle schooler or a high schooler checks out their books. I mean, we put people in planes and fly them all over the world, and we see people on phones that, you know, are in some other location. We have all these advancements in technology, and it's just crazy to me that we can't automate that system somehow so that the parent doesn't have to individually go to the library, and the librarian has to remember who gets emailed and who doesn't. And I get it that it pops up on the computer, but it just seems like so much. It should be something easy, you know? And I'm not talking about doing it at an elementary school level. I know that they check out a ton of books, and for the most part, they're safe and they're fine. But I just want parents to be involved. It's the reason that I ran to be a school board member, is to give those parents a voice. And so, what I'm saying tonight and bringing to you is just an awareness that you need to be involved and just not to trust, you know, policy to make everything the way that you wish it was for your child. Nothing's going to replace your presence and your involvement in your child's education. So, I think that's all I had to say. Thank you for listening to that.
No, no, that's important. Thank you, Ms. Cave. Dr. Shiflett?
Thank you, Chairman Cross. I would just echo that sentiment from Mrs. Cave. We want parents involved in their children's education. We recognize that students spend the majority of their waking time outside of school, right, once you figure in summer vacation, holiday break, Saturdays and Sundays. So, they spend more time away from school than with us. And so, parents are a vital part of their education and shaping all the young people. So, we definitely, and we want to be that partner with our family. So, I appreciate those words.
Thank you, Dr. Shiflett. I thank you to Mr. Swaggart and administrators and all the central office personnel that came out tonight. And I forgot to mention you guys tonight at the very beginning, but we really do- we really do appreciate you coming out to the meetings. I have told Dr. Shiflett before that he could tell you to stay home, but he's not listening to me on that. So, um, so anyway, um, we're, you're still here and it's his fault, not ours. So you get that for that. Uh, but thank you guys for taking time out of your busy schedule and coming out to the school board meeting as well. Uh, and it's good to see Chris Bryant here tonight. Uh, it's always good to see you in the house. And, um, and Ms. Amy Painter, I mean, this is good on the list of everyone that's here tonight. Uh, Ms. Judd, I'm, I can't, I can't say all your names, I probably can. Ms. William Sowers, uh, I'm, I'm going down. Anyway, anyway, um, the ship is going down now. But thank you for showing up tonight. We really do appreciate, uh, all of you guys coming. I see the assistant administrators here at East Rock. Thank you guys for showing up as well. Uh, you had to, cause Mrs. Swigert probably told you, had to show up as well. Uh, but thank you so much for coming out tonight. We do have reasons to go into a closed session and do I hear a motion to do so?
I move that the board enter a closed session to discuss and consider the following pursuant to the provisions of the Virginia Code, Section 2.2-3711A1, Personnel, Specific Public Officers, Appointees or Employees, for the purpose of considering such individuals, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining or resignation. And A2, one or more particular students specifically related to discipline that would involve disclosure of information contained in the schulastic record concerning a student.
Thank you, Ms. Lore. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Hurst. Any questions, comments, board members? Hearing none, all those in favor say yes. Yes, all opposed, no. Motion passes five oh. Thank you for coming out. Please be careful going home.
Central office staff, you may leave now.
Now, not a clock.